All right, I call the Village of Ryenbeck Planning Board meeting for March 5, 2024 to order. First out of the agenda, continued business. Jeff Dermott, 41 Livingston Street. Site plan review, project charging set up.
Hold on, Mr. Chair, before we dive into that, I just want to make one quick announcement to remind those that are present and those whenever the YouTube video comes out that the March 19th, 2024 meeting is canceled of the planning board due to the village election. So any further business for the planning board will be handled on April, April 2nd, I believe. So with that, you can go ahead.
Okay. So I'm not sure where we are on this. Has the work been done or are we still, is this still pending?
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Take care and be back out here.
Jeff, if you could.
Sid away or is he beyond campus?
Sid, is it that? Okay, that's different than last time, so.
Thank you.
I want to get through the frame.
There you go. So we pivoted when practically it wasn't really feasible to do a fixed charging station in the front. It's just given the nature of the layout, the fact that you have limitations on the length of these cables, et cetera. So it said what we did was we put in a multi-purpose plug and we have a non-permanent adapter we can plug in and out. We did do as was, as the board had approved, where we put the permanent station, we put one, because as you may recall, we purchased them, we put one on our driveway in the back and one inside our garage. But there is no permanent plug up front, so instead there's an outlet there. We did our best to make it relatively inconspicuous. When the car is plugged in, you can see the car is plugged in, that would have been the case anyway, I believe, with any of the solutions we would have talked about. I think the positive news is we've driven 7,000-plus miles and I think 85-plus percent of those miles have been electric. And I don't think it's a particularly intrusive solution that we have. I can show pictures of what it looks like, if that's helpful, what was put in, but it's not a permanent charging station.
So it's just a 2 or 3 ton plug?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, well, it's a 240 volt plug, yeah. That's exactly, that was installed by a licensed electrician and run accordingly.
So did you, this, by the way, here's the, these are the minutes from the meeting. And you'll see in line 67 to 70 what we approved. External charging station located behind the front lane of the house or next to the garage located in the rear, as long as they're more than five feet from the property. So that's where we left it off.
And that's what we did with the charging stations, right? So we have permanent charging stations and we did along the next door garage.
Okay.
We own that driveway as well, so it's all within our property. And so there is a permanent charging station. If you went down their back driveway, you would see that there. And as we also discussed somewhere earlier, we, because we had two, we put the other one inside our garage, so.
So then what are you saying? You put like a 240 outlet inside of the house and you're running an outlet up and then you're putting the charger plug into that outlet?
When we're charging there, we have a, that's right, we have a non-permanent, the car came with a non-permanent charger, like a portable unit, and that's what we say.
So why are we here? I mean, in other words, there's no charging station forward at the front of the house?
So I guess Jeff, I can send my answer that. At the November, December meeting, planning board member Clark raised the issue that Mr. Dermott was charging his vehicle in the front of the house, in that front parking area. And he provided those pictures that had the outlet and the cord running. And it was stated that he felt at that time, Mr. Dermott was in violation of what he was approved for here back in May, based on that four to zero vote. And due to scheduling issues, we couldn't get Mr. Dermott here right away until now. So that's why we're here tonight. So it's up to you guys, based on what Mr. Dermott has explained to you all, if he is in the wrong.
Yeah, no, I agree with Jeff. I don't, you know, I think it sounds fine to me.
Well, there's a difference between the charging station he showed us and the, I presume, what a 240. I didn't go on your property to take a close look.
The picture doesn't show the connection, it just shows a car plugged in.
Yeah.
I mean, I have, your picture is, it's here. All you see is, I don't have the color anymore, but there's a car plugged in, but you can't see what it's connected to.
So what's the difference in terms of the charging capacity of what you had proposed, which was sort of a little box and a 240 plug?
There is none. I mean, for that purpose, there is none. I could, you could also do a 110 volt off of there, it just would be woefully slow. So, but that's, that's the only.
So what's the advantage of buying that little box that you showed us?
It is more convenient and more permanent and just, I think, a better solution for the long term, but in deference to this group and, you know, we needed a solution. And it's been beneficial. I mean, I do know since that time, there's been lots of efforts by the village to encourage people to buy EVs and to help the village get a $5,000 grant and so. But that's, you know, we didn't do what our preferred plan was. We did something not permanent, but that works for the time being.
And the reason you switched was because the limitation with the more current solution was the 25 foot cord? So this allows you to bring this forward and have a 25 foot cord?
And I will tell you, it would be, it's much safer to, that we can charge while backed in. We have a hedge immediately to the left of the driver that goes all the way to the sidewalk. You know, backing out into the street with limited visibility would not be beneficial to anyone, I don't think. So yeah, there was no way, there's no circumstance where I think it would have been safe to run something from the house over that distance with extension cords and other things like that.
Well, I think there's a significant difference between what we were shown, which is a visible sort of box, and an electrical outlet. We usually don't, we don't get involved with electrical outlets.
I have a 240 plug.
Can I ask a question?
Front of my building.
Why isn't this treated like a hitching post of the 21st century? Because there's going to be something that's going to be coming up hopefully more and more. And in reality, whether it pleases a board member's aesthetic taste, that's one of the.
Doesn't play, comply with the code, that's the, it wasn't my aesthetic taste.
There's nothing in the code, in the code that I read that controls this that way.
The applicant, we cited the applicant. What provisions in the code? There's a prohibition against accessory structures in before the front lane of the house. The definition of an accessory structure says something attached to the ground. It cites a bunch of examples, including gasoline pump, which is, we consider roughly equivalent.
So would a hitching post be an accessory? Because it's attached to the ground?
I don't know.
Okay, well, okay.
Maybe, but it's also in the code as to be desirable as an antique thing in the historic district to save the hitching post.
As a next-door neighbor of this property, there's nothing that, the proposed, he showed me the proposed one first and there was nothing objectionable to that relative to, again, living in the 21st century.
We, we looked at the code, it seemed to violate the wording of the code. We said you could go to the Zonem Board of Appeals if you wanted to, but we can't overrule the code. And yes, the code isn't up to date for EV charging, but it uses other examples of things that were similar to an EV charging. And we don't want the village, which prohibits front yard parking, to encourage the idea that these things shouldn't be set back so that the cars aren't parked in the front yard with a, with a modern device in the historic district.
So correctly, the village should not oppose front yard parking in this situation or in many situations where there is no option for anything other than front yard parking.
Well, actually, he owns a backyard parking lot.
But that parking was approved.
Ah, it was existing.
Part of the site plan since probably the early part of the 20th century.
Right. Okay. Well, I think we have, we thank you for, you know, your efforts and I think we have done something that's where this country these days come to a consensus that this new work that you've done seems, I think, is pretty acceptable to the board. I don't think we have objections to that. And I will, I will make a motion to approve the modification of the site plan for 41 Livingston Street. Do we have a second?
Yeah, and, and the modification is that he's installed a 240 outlet that that satisfies running the cable to the, to the car without installing devices in the front of the house, right? So I will second that motion.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your effort.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're coming?
Goodbye, thank you. Thank you.
Paul. There's a sound of a sign. So evening, everybody. Paul Wiker from Chandler's Lines, representing a couple of signage clients tonight.
Seven Livingston Street?
Seven Livingston. Winnicky Land Trust has new digs.
How does this relate to Long Wave Financial?
Long Wave Financial is being removed and Winnicky is going in its place. And then the Sustainable Hudson Valley tenant is being reinstalled under the new sign. It's a direct swap in terms of the square footage.
Yes, I just didn't see the old Long Wave sign usually show us what it's replacing, so making sure that is.
I usually do. I can, I can send that on. This was kind of.
No, I just wanted to clarify that this is in place of that time.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely in place of Long Wave.
Same size? Same size as previous?
Yeah, same square footage. The, his was a little harsh on top and it had, I think, the seven Livingston address. In order to, I think we're putting, they said they were going to put a number on that siding or something for the seven.
There's also a window decal on the front door.
And you show in the application the three different items. So you've got the top panel, the lower panel, and a door glass logo.
Yeah, the door, I believe the, this is the. Sustainable Hudson Valley was previously permitted. We just listed it on there to show that it was still within the code, you know, the allowed square footage. And you'll note that the bottom of the sign is only 66 inches, but it is overall landscape that and not the sidewalk.
However, there were no trees in front of the building. They were supposed to plant trees there. They would have planted one tiny twig and it died. I don't believe there are any trees in front of the building.
Isn't that tree the tiny twig?
Trees out here, that, that little tree, there was supposed to be more trees along here. I don't have the original site plan, but we should look at that.
It seems to me there were two trees supposedly in that building.
Right, I think one of them died, I, you know, otherwise it's grown pretty big. But again, it's very hard to get trees going in the grass strip these days.
So Paul mentioned to Jeff Scales to give, to give me a call.
Okay, I haven't been able to reach him. I know there was some interest in what, what his plan is. I, you know, I don't know, I don't know Jeff personally. He's listed as the landlord. Jesse from our office did get the landlord authorization signed and we did present that to him. He said, "Debat." That was the extent of my communication with him. I don't know whether he's retiring or just decided to take the sign down. I'm not sure. I'm only working for Winnicky Land Trust for this particular transaction, but if there's things you would like to go back to Jeff with, I can try to get in touch with them and.
Can you look that up when you get a chance and see?
I can look that up and I can see the tree commission should have a record of that. If there's a tree commission tree, they're going to have a record of the planting and when that took place, so I can, I can reach out to Meg.
Winnicky should be interested in having an extra tree.
An extra tree, yes.
Definitely, right. And you've also noted in the application that there's no lighting, no illumination on the sign. It's within the limits, there's no lighting.
I assume this is sort of more of a daytime operation or is they have evening stuff there as well? Do you know?
I think these are just administrative offices. I don't believe that they're running any public events there.
No, it's in the special sensitivity open, so.
Okay, and next to. Adjacent to residential.
Commercial.
Yeah. Quasi-commercial, adjacent to residential.
Who keeps an eye on such things? But I mean, if there's no prohibition against them having meetings at night, I'm just asking.
They may have board, like a board meeting in the evening.
Right, they have their own parking lot.
Yeah, their own parking lot.
Yeah, they have a parking lot. I do recall our contact there saying that they were having a board meet, a board meeting. I'm assuming those are volunteers and it's probably a six or six o'clock meeting or something like that. I don't know that they're playing loud music or serving alcohol beverages, but, you know, what happens behind closed doors is.
But there's no light on the sign, so.
No, there's no light on the sign. They won't be able to find the place once the sun goes down, so.
Oh, everybody happy?
Yes.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve it?
Do we have a second? All second. Mike, if all of us in favor? Number two.
Number two is Kristen Hansen Jewelry. This was recently occupied by Upstate Down, which as you know, I'm sure you know, is relocating to Stickle Building. And Kristen is taking this particular space over. Just, Darren, this one I did show the.
Yeah, see that?
And the linear frontage, we're allowed seven square feet. The bracket is existing and is kind of tied to the building, belongs to the building, was provided by Joe and Kim. I'm certain it will stay. And we're just replacing the sign panel with a similar black sign, white lettering. Okay, and then that's of 4.35 square feet, double-sided, quite simple. And then we have, I would say, similar text in the windows, a little bit smaller than what Upstate Down did. Just simple white typography and a phone number and a website. All of the dimensions of these elements are called out with the appropriate square footage and then there's a tally on the last page.
Is this one have light? Because there are lights on the building that point that direction.
Yeah, they do. I, you know, I've been in this, I don't think that those work, but I can ask. I don't know, I can ask John.
But the application says no, no lighting, right?
Does it say no lighting?
The application.
Correct, the answer is no.
Yeah, item number nine, illuminated, no.
Yeah, we try to eliminate any of those spotlights on the building that are pointed at the sign because they just end up glaring in a pedestrian's eyes as they walk by? Because they're not close enough to focus on the sign itself?
All right, yes, it does say no. I, yeah, I guess they, one of them does, they do point at the sign.
One points down, one points to the sign.
Yeah, I don't know what the one pointing down does, but if you, if you want to approve this and let them know that they can't write the sign, then you just have to take one of the, one of the bulbs out of the fixtures, I guess.
Yeah, I would say unless they come in with a lighting plan that's consistent with what we require for signs, we should put as a condition that those lights are either not turned on or pointed directly down.
Okay, I can let them know for sure.
Now, the painting in there, Upstate Down is out, they're down at Stickles and there are logos on the windows. Stickles, Upstate Down has not come in for sign approval. There are logos on, I did run into her husband, John, who was to work out and be at the IXL. And he said, "Yeah, they're going to come with a sign application." And they haven't done the signing yet. I said, "What'd you do with the Stickles?"
Yesterday I did it, today it's not complete, but came off and they got about two, three quarters going up.
It was a couple of days ago.
Yeah, we're going to put the new stuff in. I said, "Do they have the Stickles sign? They haven't signed it, what are they going to do?" I said, "We, I, I would personally like it. We have Chemy's, we have the Ryenbeck Hardware Store. It's the name of the building, it's not the name of the business, but I don't know, it's up to them if they want to do that."
No, it's not up to them.
It's up to, but I asked a previous chair, obviously sitting here, and they, and he, Tim said years ago, they said, "That is the name of the building, the Ryenbeck Hardware Store building." They have pictures of the Hamlin Building and, they all had names years ago, the name of the building, and that has nothing to do with the name of the business. And, you know, we did not count the Chemy sign in the calculations for Village Pizza, so, you know.
Yes, but I think the Chemy sign is different than this one. This is from the 1970s. It's a plastic sign, block lettered plastic sign. It's not historic in any sense. And so what we agreed at the last time we discussed this is that instead we hope that they could put like a plaque on the building that says, you know, Stickles Department.
We'll see what Matthew wants to do when they come in for the sign approval, but, you know.
I have reached out, just so you know, I have reached out to John, we've had a conversation. He's very busy with the interior and we're going to meet after St. Patrick's Day to finalize the signage package.
I'm back April 2nd, April 2nd.
April 2nd?
April 2nd.
One day after April Fool's Day.
John, this is, this is. These are the lights you were referring, these are the existing lights.
Yeah.
Okay, which look like spotlights pointing down. So as part of the condition, that those lights not illuminate the front, the front of the building, the sidewalk, it.
Well, they can point directly down and wash the face of the building if they want, but they can't be pointed sideways so that they.
This is going to be in people's faces here.
Exactly.
Right. So then that's.
I tend to agree with you, those are pretty obnoxious.
Yeah, so if that's the answer, those either.
Yeah, the liquor store next door, if you want to see an obnoxious light, it's the same thing. They're pointing directly sideways and when you walk down the sidewalk, it's like right in your face.
So we have John's condition. We just need a motion and that leaves the door open. If they want to amend to have some type of lighting, then you can return April 2nd for an amended approval.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, I have one question. What, what sort of store is this?
Jewelry store.
It's a jewelry store.
It's one of these that they don't say jewelry store on there, they just say a name.
No, you don't, it did not anymore. Pretty to think so. Who knows, it's a restaurant.
No, it's what they wanted to do, you know, it's what. I think it does have, they did put restaurant underneath, very small.
Now, this one just has a name and, you know, I guess you're supposed to know because they have jewelry in the window.
Well, they have huge storefront windows. I anticipate there being a beautiful selection of custom jewelry to.
It strikes me, they're trying to identify businesses before, now they're only identifying names.
Barber shop.
Hey, I don't understand it. I mean, what we do isn't the name of my business, so it's.
When I ran into John, I talked about Upstate Down, I said, "What's moving into your own spot?" We were standing in front of Hummberg, a couple of feet away. I said, "Oh, my sister's opening a jewelry store." I said, "Yeah, but we're standing in front of a jewelry store. It's going to be a different kind of jewelry." I said, "Okay, I never had."
There's three jewelry stores within 15 feet.
People around the corner said.
Anglets. Anglets.
Anglets?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know. I just said to John, "I wish somebody opens a store that I would want to buy something." Like dread alone, you get a loaf of dread. I mean, it's not any other store that I could just walk into and buy something for me, but.
So Mr. Chair, we have a motion and a second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
They're a little antsy tonight.
Well, I'll try to work on finding more clients.
Yes. I want to open some useful, like cinnamon, you know, that was great.
And a comic book store.
Well, the comic book stores, they're moving to Red Hook, so we don't know what's going to move in there.
That's the rumor.
That's my, yeah, they'll leave it. Cheaper rent, the rent's cheaper in Red Hook. And then who knows, maybe we'll get a restaurant, maybe a food store, maybe we'll get another jewelry store. Who would get any, who knows? Last item we had is 118 East Market Street. Close to exterior renovation, modification, alterations, remove of final siding, which is great. That's it, final siding.
That's it. Victoria Colodoro here on behalf of 118 Market Street, LLC. Elijah Bender wishes he was here tonight and wanted me to make sure he wanted to be here, but he just couldn't make it. So this is similar to the project that William Gaby did at 72 Livingston Street when he restored that building a few years back. They're going to be removing the final siding. There is some six-inch wood clapper underneath, but until it's removed, they won't know the condition. And then the plan is to restore what can be restored and to replace with new.
It was in good condition when the final siding went up.
Okay, thank you.
Is it a traditional memory?
Yeah, 118 Street, Mrs. Cook's.
So hopefully it'll be in good condition and it can be restored in kind. So that's the plan, that is it. In the future, he's working with Emily Major out of Tivoli to create a custom wood-milled door. We will come back for that for approval. So right now it's just removal of the siding and restoration of the wood.
Is that Federal Door Surrounds Original?
Yeah.
Is that predates the supposed date of the house? That would be from the 18.
No, that, that house is from, from 18 Spanish.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, when you saw that doorway, it was beautiful.
The door's way is beautiful, the aluminum door.
I know, I was talking about the door surrounds.
Yeah, the entry door was replaced.
Was there a transom window there?
Yeah, that one, that's not what was there when Mrs. Cook lived there back in the 60s.
Oh, that's new?
This is not by William Gaby. This was replaced by a prior owner.
I know. The door surrounds is not original?
The door surround is, but the door itself.
Okay, yeah.
The door is metal.
Do you know if there's a transom window in there?
I don't remember, but.
It looks like there would have been, and I think that's just a piece of wood.
That's what it looks like, right?
Yeah. I was there the other day and I have a few concerns. Elijah does good stuff, so in the end I think it's going to be turned out. But that door, in spite of the molding on it, it's a steel door, or a steel-fronted door. I was looking at the molding and thinking, "This is really nice." The front stoop that you walk out to, you step down and there are pieces that are just broken off, it's unsafe. And then the sidewalk is in, is in bad there. Up at the two corners on the soffit, it looks like there was a, you can't see them from the picture, but like up behind the gutter there and behind that gutter there, it looks like there was a Yankee gutter.
It did have Yankee gutter.
And there's rot on the two ends up on the, when you're looking at it, you look up, you just see basically two holes that were patched. And behind the mines on the backside, there's four satellite dishes on the roof. And I believe, we still don't allow satellite dishes in the code.
No, it's not in there, Mike.
It used to be.
They got taken out.
They got taken out, okay.
This is the area of rot you're describing, Mike.
Yeah, oh.
That'll be just repaired as part of this process, I would assume. Because like you said, it does good work.
I'm sure they'll include it in the building permit.
Yeah, and that's just a repair, not something that comes to us.
It was in 1802 when Market Street was open, past my house. And that's why around 1810, all these houses were built. 108 and J.C. McCarthy's house on the corner with the Wayne Combs and the Bacalhia's house.
1801, Bacalhia's at 1800.
The Berryhouse Tavern was there, but the street stopped, you know. South Street was the main road, there was no road until now, and then in 1802, they went down the hill to the mobile station, which wasn't there.
Of course. In the front of the building? You show the front of the building, or I guess maybe we can see it here, but if you show the front of the building, one of the things he's asking to do is take off the window frames and, and reproduce them, because he says there's a lot of rot in the sails and that sort of thing. It looks to me, and I can't tell for sure from pictures, but they may have like chopped the window frames off at the edges in order to put the siding, you know, make it rectangular for the siding. Normally, anyway, you know, a lot of times you would see a little, you know, edge there that would stick out a little bit. So you'll be able to tell once you get the siding off whether, you know, you have to reproduce the shadow line rather than the existing...
Okay, so there would be, when you take it off, there'll be a shadow line. What's it called, the drip edge?
No, that's on top.
Yeah.
Probably, I'm thinking it's probably, yeah, might, the drip edge might go a little farther in the top.
Yeah, the headpiece of the window probably had a crown wrapped around the grits and then the drip edge.
Just to clarify, Victoria, you talk a lot about the siding and how it would be restored, but the intent is to restore the trim back to the original trim.
He wants to restore the trim, but we were under the impression we didn't need approval to just restore it in kind. So the application is for removal of the siding in conjunction with the restoration of all the wood trim.
Yeah, I think that the word "in kind" is what has me, because today there's something different there than there was previously, right? So just to confirm, the intent is to go back to what would be more authentic to this building and not to just restore the squared-off trim and the squared-off sills and things like that that are there today? His intent is to go back to more of the eighteen hundreds?
If it's inherent from the shadow lines or the paint lines or whatever underneath the siding.
Yeah, and if you do that in addition, that's fine.
Existing.
And I can't, you want me to get Elijah on the phone, you want to talk to him?
I don't think it's...
Just confirm that was the intent, right, because there's so much discussion of the siding, and then the in-kind part, just to, we're trying to make this look old again.
Yeah, you know, he, he likes historical buildings, and he wants it to look as good.
They got shuttered on the front windows.
I don't, I'm not proposing shutters at this time.
All right. Do you know that I think as a condition that the door surrounds will be saved as part of the process?
I can tell you, he wants to paint it, one of the Benjamin Moore Historic Collection colors from the Colonial Williamsburg palette, so not black.
Not black.
An earth tone.
Well, federal would probably be white.
Well, the last one he did was, um, a mustardy yellow.
Is that right?
If you have a suggestion.
You can justify it, but, uh, when he comes in for the door, maybe, or something, we can talk about that.
Underneath it is white.
Yeah, and warn him that, you know, look to see if there is a transom window underneath that board.
Sure.
Or evidence of it, because that would be nice to bring back as part of this project. It wouldn't be a big lift to put a transom window in there that, that fits it. I have a federal house in Iletres, a rectangular transom window with just one light, a dog wider down the middle, simple.
I'm wondering what you're going to find when you take the siding off, because the roof line on the right extends up, and I'm thinking that was the original house, and at that point, something was added on.
It was all contiguous siding. So at some point, they probably just replaced all the siding in the front or married it in.
Yeah.
Because it was a single-family house until Skip Olber bought it after, after she died, and, and to quick and easy, converted to multifamily and low maintenance with, with the vinyl siding.
But was it relatively handsome house before?
It was a nice, it was a nice house. And, you know, when I was growing up, the woman who lived there was elderly at that point. And had lived there for one life.
And it just had a stoop?
And it just had a stoop, no, no porch, no...
Yeah, and I think also, you know, that the sidewalk's going to have to be repaired, just because there was sidewalk maintenance, won't allow it to be the way it is.
So I think building code, when you step out, when you step in, it has to be the same level as what you're going inside. As a step down, it's, I looked at it, it's dangerous. That stoop behind the garbage can, you can't really see it in the door, but it's, it's not safe.
Yeah, and not, might not be enough room for a, a code-compliant landing in front of that door.
I don't know, it's as big as this width of the...
Yeah, but then you have to have a step down, so you can't have a big landing. I'm, I'm not saying it's going to be fixed.
We'd have to look at it, I guess.
It's terrific, thank you very much. I, I hate vinyl siding in the historic history, and this is a real opportunity to do something with a building that's...
They have motions to approve this? Does that mean, making a motion to approve?
All the motion approved with the conditions about investigating the window trim, maintaining the door surrounds, and...
The transom, the transom window.
And looking at, at the possibility of a transom window, whether that was original to the building.
Okay, so condition about maintaining trim, uh, door surround, and what was the other condition?
Well, not maintaining the trim, looking to see...
Oh, the shadow lines.
Interpreting the, what was original.
Maintain, restore the trim.
How about this language, so, um, door surround to be saved and restored, and transom window to be uncovered or replaced if it's not there today? Is that accurate?
Well, I'm not sure we can condition that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can request.
Request.
Restore the existing surround, I can have him investigate the transom.
Yeah, I think we can ask for that. I'm not sure we can require him to replace something that isn't there.
Okay.
And, and Michael's point also, to investigate the possibility of a safer stoop.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sidewalk and stupid.
And, and repair the sidewalks.
And then as far as the window trim?
I put exterior trim elements to be restored to reflect the original details as evidenced by photos or shadow lines, including the windows, which have been altered over time. How's that sound?
Well, that'll go in minutes.
Did we get a second?
Sidewalk and stupid repairs, so I think just everything you talked about.
That's the motion, who seconded?
You, we, we don't have one.
It was Johnny with those conditions, and I would be happy to second it.
Okay.
Jeff didn't.
Who seconded?
Darren seconded.
Darren seconded. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Victoria.
Thanks so much.
I have a question for Victoria about another issue. Your law office there over on Chesna, you put up mini-split at some point in the last year or so?
No.
There's, there's not a heat pump on the side of the building?
I mean, there's two air conditioning units, but they've been there since we purchased the building.
They, they were there before you purchased it?
Mm-hmm, they're old, you can come look at.
I can see it from the road, and normally when we have a, a heat pump installed...
We have this issue where apparently, I under, I know what you're getting at, the village was not requiring permits for heat pumps for a period of time, and now we know it's coming back, but we've not installed a new heat pump, that was there when we...
That was there when we bought it, and the radon thing was...
That was there when we purchased as well. The doctor kept it in a, you know, good condition. He had to have air conditioning, radon, to have patients.
Starting work on the hub, visitor centers in the back of the parking lot.
They are trying to start work.
Two years ago, I said, "What are you going to do?"
The, the Central Hudson thing's being relocated now. They worked that out.
Because two years ago, I asked, "Why, what are you going to do?", but, "Oh, we'll take care of it."
Oh, I know.
I said, "You sure, Warren? Oh, God, it will be a problem."
It took, it took us some negotiating, but that is being moved, that should be moved in the next week or so.
Oh, good, congratulations.
Is that what's lining things up, or is it just the weather?
Uh, then the foundation has to go in, so...
And the drainage of the parking lot, that's...
That will go in, yeah, that whole thing will start. When they start digging, they'll start digging. If they want to do it to people, then it's a disturbance to the tenants, so... Anything else?
As usual, you have to ask good questions. No extra charge.
Yeah, I know, you're asking about my office, but we have not done anything, so...
I just, just noticed that within the last year and a half, and it's like normally our procedure is the pipe, as it goes up, has to be painted the same as the siding, so that it's not noticeable, and I noticed it. And then when I'm looking at it, it's like, "Oh, they got radon in."
We just had the building painted, and I think we didn't think to ask the painters to do that.
So it could have, could have been when it was the last color blended in, and now, because you painted it, they didn't paint it.
No, but, okay, I, I do know the rules, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, good to see everyone.
So the bridal shop next to the pizzeria is closing, no idea what's going to move into that.
Oh, we approve it.
You should have signed for it, two weeks ago.
Covet, collect, and, yeah, share.
I have another...
Right, and I know...
Retail.
Retail, we don't know, right, yes. It was kind of like, if you want, like, I don't know, fancy dishes, candles, all kinds of interior stuff. Nothing for me to eat.
Yes.
I'm excited about it, Mike.
So, the, the big item that we have to discuss, we all got comments, do we have any minutes?
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't see any red lines from anybody, so that's why I didn't go on the agenda, because obviously Miranda's on vacation.
Oh, you know what, I think I responded, because Miranda sends them, and then you send them, and I think I, I responded to everyone that Miranda had sent them to, and I don't think she copied you, Ryan, so it's my way you didn't see all right.
I've been left out before, it's fine.
So are we, okay.
So Jeff...
Do we have minutes that everybody liked?
Yes.
And then up here, the red line went through the, you give Ryan the black, full black one?
Uh, yeah, so the red lines are Darren's, and I followed up his thing, and I sent out the, I just, the blue I added. Those are my only comments, right? So, and David, you weren't at this meeting, so I presume you'll abstain. So it's a matter of, um...
What's the date?
The sixteenth of January.
January sixteenth. Tobias Stein. Fairgrounds, there was a lot of talk on the fairgrounds, which is why there's a lot of comments in here. And, oh, yeah. Seppick, and I added one comment that he confirmed, Mark Remiss, he confirmed, they're going to have ten employees, and they're going to have a private bathroom in there that's sufficient for ten, it's not public. At the very end, some clock pointed out, "We still haven't seen anything on the cellular towers", and I added this sentence here, "It's been dragging on for several months, and there was no update on any progress." And I think if, if we're satisfied with that, that's a good segue to John's photo.
I, yeah, I think it's fine.
Why don't we... So...
Let's separate the items.
You want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So all this motion to approve as amended.
I'll second it.
And then it's, uh, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's four to nothing, okay. So John sent the picture out of this red cardboard on the roof.
Yeah, I, I ran across, I was looking for something else, and I saw this article on the New York Times, and it had a picture, because I can never find a picture of the original approved and built thing to, to compare. And I just happened to see it up in the corner here, so I blew it up and compared it, and it's a big difference. And it's just no way that should go by without, my opinion, without, you probably remember approving that one, don't you? You were on the board then. And it wasn't a big deal, you couldn't see it from the street hardly at all, and we...
This thing is gigantic.
And we put a cornice on it, so it'd look like a part of the original building. And this thing looks like a cardboard box.
Yeah, and in a prior meeting, I guess Ryan or Miranda brought the, um, minutes from a meeting a few years back specifying the cornices and, and the decoration that would be on, the detail would be on it. I guess which is what led to this one, right? Which is what led to, to this?
Yeah, that was approved back in...
Two thousand and two?
Something like that, it was two thousand and three, not on the board, it was two thousand and one.
And now what they got on is one of these things that looks like one of those joke buildings that all the four sides fall down, you know?
The magician's buildings?
Yes. Helicopter taped to us.
And it's huge by comparison, it's dominant, whereas the other one looked like a little chimney oven, you know? As you barely could see it from the street. It was, I showed the aerial, this is a twenty-twenty aerial, I think, so you can see the size of it, it was very small. It was the size of a, sort of a bigish chimney.
So, I mean, what's the next step? This is pretty clear, can we just, can, can they issue a violation on this, Ryan?
So, other than being put on the spot, um, I can just echo what's been said, that this is an enforcement issue. The permits are still open for this project, this project has not received final certificates. Um, so Ken, as the building inspector, um, I was able to locate the T-Mobile, uh, office out of Liverpool. I have a contact number, and we will start the process. No, Liverpool, New York, no, 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 we're not going across the pond, Liverpool, New York, and we'll start the process. And one item of this process to close out the permits is, they got to come back to you guys, um, for review.
So they never got a building permit?
They got a building permit for this work, I checked on that. I don't want to be too forthcoming, but when they got the permit, um, it was in December of twenty twenty. So we were in COVID. Uh, also, um, at the time, um, John Fenton was not in his position. He was on a leave of absence, and, uh, Ken and Justin were not in the employment yet of the Village of Rhinebeck. So all those items, and we had an applicant saying, "Where's my per, per permit?" I've waited three weeks, so, uh, the inspector at that time reviewed everything, felt it met the requirements for antenna work, and approved the building permit. I think the advantage, though, that the village has is no one submitted anything to close out the permits. No one submitted any final engineering documents to request for certificates to be issued.
So it doesn't ever see them out?
It does not.
We want to take it down.
So I, this is the ability for, for Ken to act and, um, do what he does.
Okay, okay, they got a contact, and...
So I will get the ball rolling and find out if there's a, a specific employee of T-Mobile that's assigned to this location, this antenna, uh, here in Rhine, Rhinebeck, and get their information and get them in contact with Ken.
Good.
Can I ask a question? Why isn't it the property owner?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing, like, there's a lease with them, right?
We don't know if there's a lease.
The property owner is responsible for the property.
Parker still owns the building.
She still owns the building, however, she's not responsible for the maintenance of the antenna.
She's responsible for the building.
But she's getting rent from T-Mobile.
We understand that that existed in two thousand and two, two thousand and three, when they first created the cabinet. We can only assume that's hap, happening now, so, um, I think Ken will have the access to both the contractor, T-Mobile in this case, and then can proceed with the property owner, the tri, tri was one EC's fit.
Yeah, make sure they both have noticed.
Yes, because obviously when they come back in front of you guys, they're going to have, probably have to be some kind of authorization letter as the, you know, property owner of record.
Yeah, because I mean, if an apartment tenant built a balcony on their apartment, we would immediately contact the property owner about it, not necessarily the tenant, but maybe...
Well, we already had that, Darren, we had that over on Livingston Street.
Okay, great, so, I was aware of that, but you know what I mean, so we probably would contact both in that situation. It doesn't seem all that much different.
Well, in that situation, we contacted the owner, because the owner made that decision, we didn't contact the contractor.
Right, you drive by, you see somebody building a balcony on it, and you...
No, they built it and decided not to let us know or do any change order or anything like, anything like that.
There is, in federal law, there's something, and I can't remember the exact name, it's called an eligible facilities, something or other, that allows them to, once they have something up, to make changes to it without going through the permitting process. But it can't be significantly enlarged or changed, it's just, if they add another antenna to an existing pole or something, he'll, they'll probably say, "Oh, this was an eligible facilities contractor", whatever, the... And he'll, they'll probably say, oh, this was an eligible facilities contractor, whatever the name of it is. And we don't have to come to you. And so he should be prepared to say that that only takes effect if they're doing nominal changes, not dramatic size differentials.
And if you got a CO on the prior work to say.
We looked at that, John, when we had to re-rewrote the code and that was the equipment, the specific equipment on the tower. They didn't have to get an approval to swap out equipment on the tower.
Yes.
But that doesn't respond to the issue here, which is.
No, I don't think so, but that's what they're going to say.
Right.
Because they always throw that in your face until you tell them and have a lawyer say no.
I ran into a lot of FCC websites, direction when I was searching for T-Mobile today. So yeah, I got, I was, yeah, I was.
Yeah, but if they never CO'd the original works, they had nothing to add to.
No, there's a CO for that.
There is.
There's a CO for the original back in two thousand and two, two thousand and three. There's no CO for whatever they've done. It's ever behind that, those walls, there's no CO for that.
Plus, I think as you're pointing out, the building owner should be engaged in this process. Because if it comes to it and the building owner tells T-Mobile, I'm not renewing your lease.
Well, I think it saves Ryan all this work, right? You put the panic in the building owner and the building owner gets the tenant on the phone rather than Ryan having to figure out the tenants and get them to call him back. So I think you just delegate to them.
Yeah, as long as the, the engagement of the building owner makes them know they've got skin in the game here.
Right.
And they need to participate in the solution.
If we can make a part of the solution.
I'd get a part of them. Okay, so.
So, so the next, the next item, Chair.
Huh?
So the next item, guys, I, I don't want to steal the chair or stun thunder here. So the next item, as I'm sure you were all shared with from trustee Slavy, the language for the proposed overlay district was circulated for the board to, well, the board has a choice. You guys can comment as a unified group and submit one large document, if it is in fact ends up being large. Or you can individually comment as individual planning board members. Based on the language in preparation for the upcoming public hearing on March twenty-sixth.
Now, Ryan put out, it's not an official plan coming for us for a vote, it's a, it's a comment requested by the board. So if we could choose one of two ways, each send five comments to Lydia, or we could do an email chain, we pass it around and around and around. These are the issues that we have with these six pages that we may have, well, Darren says this and John says, oh, you could really say it a different way. And do we want to do that or do we want to just submit five comments to them?
I think we should discuss it so we're all going to benefit from.
Well, my question is.
And I think, didn't we determine you can't do this sort of email thing?
You can do the email thing, John, because you guys are not voting on this amendment to the law. You are commenting. The entity that can, that votes on this amendment is the mayor and the trustee board. All you guys are doing right now is reviewing draft language to amend the code to include the creation of this overlay district. And you can submit concerns, comments, questions. And you have the option either to do that as a group and have such as an itemized list, or you can do that individually as in individual planning board members to submit to the mayor and the trustee board for, you know, obviously consideration at the public hearing on March twenty-sixth.
So my concern was buried in the four hundred pages of seeker was this picture. And it's called the Buckley Schoolhouse Overlay District. So is this what they're voting on or they're voting on a law? Because the law mentions that there'll be ten apartments, one of which is affordable housing. That there'd be, I think it's eighteen parking spots, two handicap spots. That, you know, so is this what they're voting on or are these houses subject to change or, you know, modification? Could he not build lot four and put a pickleboard court on the corner, a pool for the tenants in the back somewhere? I mean.
They're voting on a law.
If they vote.
If they vote.
They don't have to vote on March twenty-sixth.
They, what's before us is a change in the law that allows a single parcel district in this location. And this is the proposal, so this is what some of the information is based on. But it throws it to us for final site plan approval in which we can make changes or.
When that happens.
Right.
Because we, it's many.
There are certain limitations like thirty-one bedrooms and things like that. But we can, they're leaving it up to us to determine lighting and landscaping and parking numbers.
We have to approve the subdivision, we have to approve a partial demolition permit of a historic structure. I mean, lot number two is sitting on a cinder block building and the parking lot's in the gym.
Yes.
So, and we have to look at this like someone's, lot one backs out onto Market Street to leave the building, which is extremely dangerous. And we've gotten rid of the chain link fence and now they want to put the grass in the back. At the original plans from a few months ago, showed a house on the corner. Now we're going to have a big six foot fence around that thing. There's no.
Well, this, like I said, this plan.
It's just a digestion.
Yeah.
And then we have the double driveways here coming out this way.
Yes.
There's a lot of, you know, and where are the front doors? We like, if this is Market and this is Mulberry and this is South, that's the addresses, then the front door should be facing those streets. And there's no, so we have a lot of questions that will come to us during the site plan that, you know, if they even submit this part, if it even gets to us, because it could be lost, so we've got to stop it, so we, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I had a lot of the same concerns and, you know, I think the law does something to regulate this and provide some of the requirements for these houses to adhere to. But what I noticed was that there is a lot of gaps in the proposed language here, the proposed zoning law change. That's, they're going to tie our hands because we don't have, I think, enough meat in our current historic district regulations or our regulations in general to deal with, I think, the set of problems or opportunities this creates. The things we wrestle with almost every week, right? Like even heat pumps and things that come up aren't in our code specifically and they aren't in this amendment. So I think we have the opportunity, as they amend the law for this particular set of lots, to put some of the things in there that we know are going to become issues.
So, so just to pause right now with what Darren has raised, I think what needs to be decided or how you guys leave here tonight is that something that the board wants in a single document? What Darren just said as an item, as an itemized, as a bullet point within the document? Or would you prefer that that just come from comments from Darren as a planning board member?
I think we should vote as a board.
So do I.
And, and if any of us individually disagrees with what we come to as a consensus, then we can write a separate letter as a resident. Because I wrote a letter on this and they sent me a thing, thank you very much, and then they ignored it.
Can we see your letter, John?
What?
Can we see your letter?
It's posted on the website.
Oh, it's on the website, it's on that village.
Yeah, they, they post everything on the website. So you can read my letter if you want and.
I will.
Because Darren's point about, you know, solar panels, heat pumps, electric chargers, you know, we, we don't know where the front door.
There's a whole like massing.
It talks about front doors.
Things that aren't in there that.
In the six pages?
Yeah, there's a provision about the, any buildings that front on East Market or South have to have a front entrance that faces that way.
Yeah.
Looking garbage, they said garbage will be inside, well, how does it get outside? What kind of containers are, who's doing it?
But all of that can be worked out in site plan.
Yes.
You know, I, I think that.
Like flipping the slot, I mean, because.
Well, well, but.
It's a, it's a double entrance in Mulberry.
I haven't, I've kind of skimmed this thing, I haven't really had a chance to look at it, I need some time to look at it. And this meeting is only three weeks away.
They sneak in.
My concern is how we, you know, if we, if we wanted to have a single response, we would have to have that in three weeks.
Yeah, you'd have to work on a draft, yes. You all would have to collectively work.
Well, I could offer that. I mean, I, I spent some time with it over the weekend and I, I feel like in a few hours I could put my comments into a format that sort of references the proposed law. So in other words, I could respond to point three, four and five and then get it into all of your hands so someone else can pick up where I left off.
I could do that as well, but not, not, not by tomorrow.
No.
We had a couple of weeks.
Yeah. We had like three weeks.
As Ryan points out, because, because we're not the legislative body. The, the, the planning board does not decide and vote on legislating subdivisions, et cetera. We enforce the code. And so what I want to be careful of, looking at this thing, because they're proposing code. Once that code is enacted, if there's something we have a problem with, we're SOL, you know?
So that's a very good seg, 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 segue, Jeff. Unfortunately, Lydia could not be here because she tested positive for COVID. But in her email, she extended the offer that if any Zoom meeting needs to be created between any member of the board and David Gordon as the planning and zoning attorney, she would facilitate that. If any Zoom meeting with her needs to be facilitated, she would facilitate that. And obviously I would assist in any capacity. But there, there is that element there of either reviewing or discussing with David Gordon sort of the legal impacts as once this becomes codified, you know, as a board, you know, can you, or do you feel comfortable, you know, sticking to it, going behind it or, you know, however you want to.
Well, I think that's the point, right? We want to get our comments in now into the proposed law because that's what we're going to have to review this against. But I think the other issue is we don't have a meeting in two weeks.
I don't think you guys would have to vote on a collective letter. I think if, if you decide tonight and vote on tonight that as a board, you guys are drafting a collective letter, I think that should be sufficient enough to provide to the mayor and the trustees because this is a public, a public hearing, there's no guarantee that they're going to vote at the end of the public hearing. So possibly based on your guys' comments, based on comments of the public, you could see a whole new draft five weeks, six weeks from now that.
So, so we should ignore this, this is going to be demolition permit, lot, lot.
Well, it's a concept.
Concept.
It's, it's a concept you should, you should consider, Chair, don't ignore it.
Yeah, it's going to probably be four lots and ten apartments. Because that's sort of outlined in the law.
And it's up to us in the site plan.
But we can move the houses around.
The double driveways and not having, you know, so the.
So I'm sorry, go ahead.
What can you do on the septic system? You can have a picnic table and a barbecue, you can't put a pool, obviously. You can't put a pickleboard court, a paved court of some kind.
This is permeable.
This is permeable. Well, but still, if you have to get to it, you got to rip it out.
It's a lot, it's a backyard.
So this would be.
It's the backyard.
So this is an example of some of your feedback, David, right? John, the letter you wrote, which I want to look at, is that letter addressing all of your concerns with all four of these documents, which we just got? Or is your letter, okay, so is there more?
They picked up, I, I gave them like eight points or something like that and they adopted, they put in one in the draft.
Okay.
So let me just say my biggest point, because it's sort of a, it's not a, you know, a minor point, it's sort of the whole thing. They're asking the village, because of the building, preserving the building and now creating affordable housing, an affordable housing unit, ten percent, to adopt a Berkeley, Berkeley School overlay zone. And everything I know about zoning is you don't do a one parcel overlay.
Why is this not spot zoning? Why do they say it is not spot zoning?
Well, explain that.
Let's be honest, it is, you know, the lawyers will argue that it's not, but.
Yeah, spot zoning is not a technical term, it's a case law term and there's a lot of variability in it.
Right.
But it's an invitation to get sued. Because it is a very, it's, it's bad zoning practice to do an overlay zone on one parcel. And so my argument, the bulk of my argument in that letter was they should do an affordable housing overlay zone that allows them, any property owner over a certain size, to come in and apply for a, a, a non-traditional site plan that would allow multifamily in the residential district, which is not allowed now. And that way, if, and the example I used at the board meeting was the Astrohome. They are apparently getting rid of all their dorm residents.
Let me take it.
They're going to have a building that's set up for residential purposes that isn't going to have any residents in it. And it's a historic building or probably in a, in a historic district at least, I'm not sure.
It's on the historic register, not on our village register. But it and the Maples and Eliza's house, the Better House, are the three houses on the town's historic register.
And so the whole property, so at any rate, why wouldn't, the rules we are putting forward for this property shouldn't apply to other properties that could be adaptively reused for residential and affordable housing. And that way they would, they would protect themselves against being sued for spot zoning. Now, I didn't raise spot zoning in my letter because I didn't want to telegraph a strategy to anybody else. But what I suggested is that they, and I don't, I see why they don't want to do it because it involves a much bigger seeker consideration, because now you're thinking about other parcels. And they want to move forward, they've already delayed this thing for a long time, they want to move forward on this apparently. But I still think it's bad practice and at the very least they could pass everything that's here and call it the adaptive reuse overlay zone rather than the Berkeley School one and allow it to be for other parcels if they so choose. So anybody can apply for it, they can say, no, yours doesn't work, we don't want it there. But if another, like the Astrohome came in and wanted to do affordable housing in one of their back buildings, it would be all set up and ready to go.
Just as an aside, do you know how big the parcel is that the Astrohome is on?
It's, uh.
Twenty acres.
Twenty, oh, wow, okay.
Sort of almost that.
So I, I get that, and the reason I was asking, if we take a look at your, would your letter be your feedback on the fourth thing?
No, they changed this now.
Okay, and, and Darren says he's got a lot of it. What I propose, what I suggest is let's take a week and by a week from now, if each of us can share an email with our concerns, issues, comments, whatever, then we can, then we'll have.
Can we do comments on the text?
Yeah, I mean, this is what they're asking us to.
Random comments in line because then we have to.
I think it should correlate to the numbers in this, this proposed law, right? So we can make some sense of it.
Do we have a Word version of this?
I, I think, yes, I think Lydia.
This is a Word version.
As both, it's Word and, and PDF.
So we can do, anybody can do a red line version and start it around. And, because I've already looked at it, Darren's already looked at it, we can get it going and then you can review it. And when all five of us have had a chance to throw our comments in the mix, maybe we could schedule a Zoom call to talk it out if there's any controversy still. Or if anybody's okay with the revised draft, marked up draft, then we'll just.
For Zoom, for Zoom call though, you got to do it two, two by two.
I thought we were excited for the open meeting.
I, I don't, I don't, well, but that's different. I don't think we can, I don't think you guys can meet as one singular group.
That's what I was asking for, so, yeah.
You guys can comment on something that you're not directly voting and, and, and in there communicate via email with that because you guys are not the final vote.
Let's see if we can resolve it by email then, with a Zoom call.
Yeah.
Because two by two doesn't help very much.
I mean, if absolutely you want to do that, I just need.
Ten days?
Uh, no, it's not that much, uh, between three and five days to notify that there's going to be a special meeting by the planning board held on whatever date.
Can we do a Zoom meeting anymore, official meeting?
No.
We'd have to come in.
Yes, it has to be in person, that, that definitely has to be in person.
So let's, within a week, try to, everybody comment on this thing and we'll see how close we are and how controversial our comments are. If we can just put together an edited, edited version.
And we give Lydia the red version, so you're just like the minutes where you can. where you can see all the changes that were made.
Well, well.
Absolutely.
Let's hope so. With five, with five. Writing code is a little, like writing code in a red line is a little harder than just making a code. So maybe, you know, where, where we feel comfortable with redlining the code, but we also may just need space to like put a comment.
Put a, right, can I?
Put a question or something.
Yeah, I think the first step is for us to say, we're all gonna have our comments to share with each other in a week. And then see how the process goes, because with five cooks in the kitchen.
But John's point is good, we'll keep them in the order of this. Just, you know, put it into the sections they have here, so that.
In this document.
In this document.
And, and that three hundred, there's four documents, one of them is three hundred and forty-three.
Yes, the secret, yes, the long form.
So before it appears, I mean, it's a lot of traffic studies.
But that's the one that actually shows this.
This is buried in that, yeah.
That's an older version too, I think they've changed it since.
Really?
Yeah, because I don't, I don't remember this lot being this way anymore.
Well, if they've changed it, then the documents they gave us aren't reflecting what, what they're suggesting.
I saw one where there's a house on.
Sides and for traffic purposes and everything else, it's just saying whether the building has moved forward or backwards.
I don't, well, we, when it comes to site plan, we have control over this. We can say backing out onto Market Street is a suicide mission.
But that doesn't happen now.
You can't do that.
If that's what the code says, we can do that. When we, remember, once again, when we do site plan review, we're reviewing against what the code says.
Yeah, we still have discretion for safety purposes, not allow somebody to back out under red line if there's an option.
Well, yeah.
Three or eight.
They have a double driveway on South Street, they should have a double driveway.
Well, this, this law does, that's the one thing that they picked up from my letter is that the planning board should be allowed to share, require a shared driveways.
Yes, I saw that, you know, this is crazy.
Within the seeker document, isn't it true that you guys can question the answers that they made in that document? That if you feel they have not provided enough explanation or enough detail or enough detailed answer, the board can, can question that answer and request that further review be done or.
No, I would be very reluctant to do that because they've spent months and months on seeker and three hundred and some pages and it's not.
Not much of it, is he?
What we really were doing is the letter of the document.
Between nine and five.
Probably try to stick to that.
Between nine and five, forty and a half cars, made a right turn onto Mobbers.
Because they've parsed the seeker documents forever.
It's too much.
And the second item, within this week, does the board feel it helpful to review minutes from when Aster? Or do you feel that that's too old or the code? When Aster had the dormitories and the pool when they came?
I don't think we need that.
No, nobody feels that'll be better?
Well, we shouldn't get involved with other parcels except in the principle that this should be framed so that it applies to other options. That's just my personal opinion.
Because Tim always said, what happens if the hospital goes belly up? What the hell would we do with that building? And that'd be a great, you know.
And we don't need a comment.
Blue vans closes the hospital. They killed the expansion, you know, they could do anything, you know.
Yeah, but that's a good point, though. If, if we are going to comment on this in the broader sense, all of our comments need to be geared towards that. But if we're gonna say, well, that ship has sailed and this is strictly for this parcel, then our comments are much more focused on the materials.
All my comment is focused on this change in the name of the overlay zone.
Right.
Not changing a lot of the text. I only have five or six comments in the text.
So, but any technical comments we make, we need to be thinking more globally if we're gonna make, if the threshold suggestion is that this should, we should change the name of this and this should be something that could apply to multiple properties throughout the village. Then as we comment on all of these different points of the law, the future code, we have to think through not just this parcel, but all of the other potentially applicable parcels. To Ryan's point, we'd have to think about how it might affect Aster and this site plan.
You should read my previous letter.
Okay.
Because I make that case and they opted not to do it.
No, and I hear, and I believe you made that.
Because I said you shouldn't put number of bedrooms because another site might have more bedrooms.
Another opportunity for that to be injected.
But for us to respond to them, we need to choose, are we responding to this or are we starting from your?
I think we're, I think we're, you can read my letter and make the decision on your own, but I think we have to focus in on this.
And I agree, I think our firepower has to be focused here now because they've clearly said this is what we want to do.
Yes, and the most I can hope for is they don't shoot themselves in the foot by going with the Berkeley School overlay zone, I think.
Yeah.
So Darren, do you want to craft, unless you have something more?
I think we're doing this simultaneously, we're all just gonna start to share and then we can figure out who kind of pulls the pieces in.
So do you want to craft a motion that's the decision of the board?
Yeah, so that, so that if we come to a curfew on a draft letter, we'll have voted to approve it and send it on to the.
Yeah, so the consensus of the board is that we will provide a united letter and not individual letters expressing our comments about the proposed zoning change.
But we should come to that decision after we see each other's feedback in a week time.
Well, it's only six pages.
Within the week's time.
Is there a second to that motion?
Sure.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
So John and then Jeff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll do this by an email chain if possible.
Yeah.
Even though we don't have village email addresses, which we, which we heard once that we might get, now, now it was decided, we just create our own.
Jeff, that's, it's, 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 it's okay because you guys are not the final authoritizing body that, that is gonna vote on the final amendment.
Okay, so that makes it illegal.
Yes, and the, and the, if you want to set up a separate Gmail for your planning board.
You can do that.
We can do that. The village doesn't want to do it for us. But if you don't want your home email dragged into some freedom of information thing, it might make sense to do a, you know, Jeff Christensen's Planning Board at gmail dot com.
Will, will you do that? Are you considering doing that?
I thought about it at the time, but I got lazy and never did it.
Well, okay.
If anybody really reconsidered this, don't wing it in the dark.
I'm gonna digest that, that's a, that's a new idea to digest that.
The attorney and beacon strongly suggested and they all set, they, the city set up email addresses for each of the planning board members officially, so that their personal email would be sheltered from all this. So it might be a good idea, I would suggest that. Not that we've ever had that happen, but it could.
I think we just all need to be careful, if somebody does do that, to not pull all their other email addresses in. Because I do, sometimes the emails have, you know.
Okay, let's, let's leave as is for a couple, one step at a time here. Within, within the next week, we can get back to.
But ten days from now, the five of us can't meet in Jeff's living room.
Okay.
You, you have to come like here and that.
No, well, we have a, we're not allowed to have satanic cult meetings on that property either. Part of the condition of the parcel was you bought it from the church. It's in there.
Is that in the church?
Exactly, you can't perform abortions and you can't have cult meetings on the.
I don't remember satiety like that.
So Jeff.
When I bought my house, maybe they weren't quite so.
Did you buy your house from the church?
Well, I brought it from the church.
Land, yeah.
No, we bought it, no, we bought it from the Catholics.
I did it in ninety-six, it was just eight, twenty years in advance and that was it.
That's right.
Is there any other business?
No.
Motion overturned?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.